On the order of the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, March the 6th, you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We will be led in prayer this evening by Dr. Sean Holloway, Senior Pastor and CEO, First Baptist Church of Greenwood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, during this holy season of Lent, we pause our hectic lives to reflect upon our relationship with you. You call us out. We know that for a variety of reasons, our connection to you feels broken. Gently call us back. Be that still, small voice that we long to hear. And when we seem to be surrounded on all sides with animosity, division, feud, send your spirit of peace. And now, as we embark upon this meeting, let your will be done. Be a counsel, comfort, and guide to these servants. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call.
Present.
Present.
Here.
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 And we do have a call. All of you should have received copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting of February the 22nd. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lexi. Second. Second, second by Mr. Bates. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? There are none, then roll call on the minutes.
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Councils.
Yeah, I didn't send, so my monthly report's available on the SharePoint.
Right, and then go to Control at this point. Any other committee or board reports? Moving on to public comments, and at this time, we will turn it over to our Mayor, Mr. Myers.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilor. Tonight we have the honor of swearing in seven new firefighters and promoting one firefighter. All the family members, I want to welcome. Thank you for being here. Thanks for being a part of this evening. This is a very special time for each one of these young men that are getting sworn in today as firefighters. The Greenwood Fire Department's a very special organization, and we want you all to know that. Once they're sworn in, they're part of the family. Fire Department is a family. We work together as a family, and take care of each other as a family. I ask that each one of you keep an eye on your family member. If you see a problem, if you see a concern, talk to somebody so that we can work with them quick. We offer some of the best training in the state. We take care of our guys, and we do everything we can to make their job as safe as possible. But it's a stressful job, and they need your support as well at home. So if there's ever any problems you might see, feel free to reach out to the department. We want to work with them, we want to take care of these people, we want to send them home in better shape every day than when they came in war.
Mr. Campbell, Councilmembers, I want to announce seven new firefighters that we're swearing in tonight. First is Austin King. Evan Cecil. Corey Fisher. Connor Turdune. Kyle Gilbert.
Raise your right hands, won't be after me. I state your name.
Having been appointed to the position of firefighter for the Greenwood Fire Department.
Swear that I will obey and enforce all the laws of the United States, the State of Indiana, the ordinances of the City of Greenwood, and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
And that I will obey all the lawful orders of my superior officers, and will faithfully discharge the duties set off us to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Gentlemen, the badge is always ceremonial. I would request that your significant others, friends, and family come forward and take Congratulations, gentlemen. We can get pictures out in the hallway. Councilmembers, we're glad to promote one person to lieutenant tonight.
I, Grant Gilbert, have been, having been appointed to lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department.
Lieutenant, Greenwood Fire Department.
Swear that I will obey and enforce all the laws of the United States, the State of Indiana, the ordinances of the City of Greenwood, and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
Rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
And I will obey all of the lawful orders of my superior officers, and faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Set off us to the best of my ability.
Anybody who'd like to come up, take your badge. Congratulations. Thank you, and congratulations to our new firefighters. Those of you who wish to leave, we do so, we have some business to do.
Thank you.
As they are exiting, this is the time we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step forward to the podium, stick your David address for the record. There is a five-minute time.
Yes, I am a male volunteer. Now, I want to talk against two ordinances. The first one, 2310, a rezoning consideration. I'd like to see it modified for the pass or rejected entirely. It is basically another tip area being subdivided for more, has initially turned out to be low-paying jobs with a tight turnover and slums. And so I'd like, before I pass this, add a little bit to it to help the citizen, to help pay our firefighters, to help fix my sidewalk, to help my schools, by first moving to take out the tip area. Or we're heading to modify it, but it won't give any special tax breaks to anything, everything that moves in there. Or even helping all the people who are trying to find housing near the warehouses, rezone it for small houses, much like Northern Park, getting rid of the costly, violent siding rule, getting rid of the silly setback rules to make every house look like a crossword puzzle, you know, fix some changes to it instead of following the same old pattern that is not really working out for us. Greenwood has done a tremendous job in promoting low-paying jobs and disrupting businesses. I think that by rejecting this particular, adding more change in it, you will be giving a break to our schools, to our police, and hopefully taking care of the brakes of my sidewalk. The other one I'd like to talk about is the 2309 security cameras for the apartment garage next to what some people are calling block Field Gardens, and other people are calling the Madison. It's promoted about as much as the Epsom is. But I'm not sure about the pains with the security cameras for what's supposed to be this upgraded apartment complex. Maybe they should pay us for the security cameras. I don't know what sort of deal we have as far as who gets to park there, who has to park a path, who pays. Before we add all this stuff to Greenwood's bill, let's get some details on who's going to live there and who the security cameras for. You know, based on the data that we're not supposed to pay attention to, we don't have crime problems, so we shouldn't need security cameras. If we go by the data, then it goes the other direction. So I would ask you to think about these things, get a little more detail on the security cameras and the apartment garage that's maybe not open to the public, and the building of more of what's not been good for the city. Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Radio 1157, Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana 46143. This is a rare occasion, Mr. Margaret Duke and I are on opposite sides of 2310. As someone who's very familiar with the area, I've been in this area for 20 years, I've seen the expansion of the Worsfield Road, I've seen the growth in the area, and I've seen this section of land, quiet tournaments, for those 20 years. We've talked with other developers and tried to get people to develop different things in there, and I know part of it is the waterway that's down there. This is Anderson Hauser that's wanting to help develop this area. This is someone who's brought up a lot of good jobs to Greenwood, someone who participates in Greenwood, especially when it comes to STEM, our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, teaching to the young people. This is a company that has a good reputation here. I know that it's been said that we should develop houses in here for those that are lit, are working in the warehouses, but again, knowing this area, knowing the waterway that's through there, how hard it is to get in and out of this area in traffic, especially any time during rush hour, the backups that it would cause, plus the load on our already-stressed fire and police departments if we were to add another, what, 300, 400 houses in there versus doing commercial and industrial. Changing this, I think, is for the betterment, not only for the city, but for the citizens. I know that there's talk of changing even the ordinances to build cheaper housing. I just don't think that it would fit here, not where the city has come these last 20 years, and where I've seen leadership take this in moving forward. Again, there's, this is set for almost, well, the 20 years that I've been here, anyone who wanted to develop residential could have applied to redevelop this, or I'm sorry, had it changed with its zoning and developed it as residential. No one's chosen to, every time we mention this, whether it be residential or business, it's always come up that it's the waterway. We've got somebody that's willing to work with this, develop it into something that we know that they've already done with their buildings, what they've done with the city, and seeing just rough plans of what they plan to go in here with the frontage on 31. I believe that this should be put forward and approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? One line. All right, then moving on, ordinances and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2310.
An ordinance, a new official zoning map adopted by reference to the development ordinance number 2029, 2029, poses rezoning approximately 33.23 acres located at the southeast corner of US 31, Worsfield Road, that, Sennell Properties, sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Lexi. Second, second by Ms. Gibson. Anyone wishing to talk about this? Go ahead. Say your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name's Mike Tenko. Address is 250 East 96th Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. I work for Kenwood-Horman Associates, we're a civil engineering firm, and I'm here on behalf of Unicorp National Development. Mr. Sean Adams has joined us on the Zoom call, and then we also have a few folks from Anderson Hauser here as well. As was already mentioned, Anderson Hauser's been a very supportive partner in this project. They've been working very closely with Unicorp to make sure that this 70 acres can transform into something really special for the city of Greenwood. So our request is for a zone map change of approximately 33 acres in the current condition, which is shown on the screen here. These, it's a part of a parent parcel that's approximately 70 acres that is on the east side of US 31 between Worsfield Road and Bushville Road. Of the 70 acres, we're requesting to rezone approximately 33 of those acres to a commercial medium format, commercial large format. The existing zoning for the 70 acres is industrial large format. The image I have on the next PDF here gives a breakdown, approximately the northern 11 acres is what we're requesting to be switched to commercial medium format, and the larger 21 acres, 22 acres to the south along US 31 is what we're requesting to be changed to the commercial large format. We are also pursuing a primary plat approval concurrently with this, and that's scheduled to go to Plan Commission at the end of the month as well. So I wanted to touch quickly on the criteria that we use for stating that we believe this is a good zone map change that meets the statutes of code. So when it comes to the comprehensive plan, we noted that while the future land use map in the comprehensive plan shows the entire 70-acre parcel to remain industrial, we believe that given the US 31's frontage, that the commercial zoning is appropriate. The commercial development has the ability to act as a transition zone between the US 31 corridor as it transitions to the advanced manufacturing district, which is part of the existing Anderson Hauser campus. The eastern half of the 70 acre parcel is to remain industrial, and we also wanted to note that the use designation on the west side of US 31 in the comprehensive plan is already shown as commercial. In regards to the second item, the current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each district, at this time, the parcels to the west, north, and several of the parcels to the south of the site are consistent with the proposed commercial zoning. And then on a larger scale, the proposed uses are consistent with those along the US 31 corridors through Greenwood. The intent is for the proposed development to be complementary to the existing and growing Anderson Hauser campus, that is, to the east of the subject property. The third criteria, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, the proposed use meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, and current uses in the area are compatible with the proposed development, creating more options for retail, dining, and professional services, yields the most desirable use for nearby residents and nearby working professionals. The fourth criteria, the conservation of property values throughout this jurisdiction. We stated that the use of adjacent properties would not be negatively affected because approval of this petition is consistent with development in the surrounding area. Landscape buffers and stormwater detention areas are intended for development to minimize any effects on adjacent properties. As such, this rezoning will not negatively impact surrounding property values. And then lastly, the responsible development group. We noted that the marketplace is showing that Greenwood is a desirable place to work and live, which creates a higher demand for commercial services. The proposed development is consistent with surrounding area and creates a complementary use, or creates complementary uses adjacent to the well-established Anderson Hauser campus. I will also note that the staff report for Plan Commission provided a favorable recommendation, and that as I'm sure you saw, the Plan Commission sent along five conditions as a part of this, mostly regarding collaboration with the city engineer when it comes to public thoroughfares, completing a traffic impact study, which we've already started that conversation with Mark St. John, the city engineer. There was a commitment regarding site access shall meet traffic study recommendations that we will add the trail per the cop plan through the common areas and along US 31, and then that we would also work with staff regarding the proximity to the lift station, which is at the north end of the site, the existing city lift station, and we're agreeable with all those conditions. So with that, I believe the Anderson Hauser folks also had a few comments that they wanted to say in regard to the petition request, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Good evening. My name is Marisol Saint Chets. I am Executive Director with Anderson Hauser, address 2358 Anderson Place, and I'm here in representation of Anderson Hauser and in full support of the proposal that has just been set before you. I just want to make a few comments about the proposal and the reason why it is very important and critical for us to have this pushed forward. First of all, as we've mentioned in the past, this project is very near to your heart, we're committed to this community. In the past, we have tried to purchase this property, but it's not come without its challenges. One of the challenges has been in the acquisition itself, because the family that owns the property has not been willing to subdivide the property for acquisition. Instead, they have been acquiring the sale, the sale and acquisition of that as a whole, full 70 acres. And Anderson Hauser has not been positioned to do that, to purchase the full 70 acres. So with that, we have been having to search for and we have found the strategic partner to align with, which is with Unicorp, to be able to do that, whereas we go in together for the acquisition of the property and subdividing it between ourselves. The other set of challenges, as you can see perhaps reflected in some of these diagrams, is the challenges of the development of this property itself. It comes with the drains that you see, and there's two of them that are running across this property, which creates a lot of developmental challenges. As you probably have heard in the past, this property has sat there for decades really without being further developed. And so we are really interested in helping bring these opportunities to develop the property, not just for the company, the organization as a whole, but to our employees, but also for the community at large. It's been a commitment to the city. We have been committed and anchored in the city and would really appreciate the opportunity to further take this vision and make it come to fruition. That partnership that we have found with Unicorp, being able to develop the property in a way and create the master plan, and our ability for our project to proceed really is dependent upon the ability to move forward with the development as been proposed. So would strongly request the approval of this, and we remain steady and ready for any questions that you may have in support of this. But again, I want to thank you for the opportunity, and let us know if you have any questions. It'll be right here.
Thank you.
As you probably saw, the staff recommendation was favorable. This is next to US 31, west of it, it is commercial. This was federal line with the other side of US 31. It was commercial, a kind of a commercial corridor. Just to kind of reiterate what I've already said, having complementary uses next to an industrial campus can be beneficial due to the services it can provide the workers at that campus. The day I walked over to copy, I was five, that was a complimentary service to... I don't think it gets better as we wait. But that was a complimentary service to meeting our work done today, so. Any questions, I'll try and answer them. Apparently tonight I can't, but maybe call on one of them, but sorry about that, and we would recommend a favorable approval for this project. Who came back?
Any questions from the council, for any of them?
No questions, but a comment, this is the Plan Commission here.
7:00. And there's supposed to be more members if I may ask. We're missing one or two.
We were missing a member, and someone did step out for a conflict of interest. Right. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'd just like to say that Anderson Hauser, as everyone has said, has been in our community for a large number of years. They've expanded beyond, you know, what we ever thought that they would, and they're showing how strong they are, and I don't see this, if anything, that.
Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2310.
Aye.
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 Ordinance 2310 passes on a vote of nine to zero. Thank you.
First reading, ordinance 2309.
Norance, providing for an additional preparation to the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus for Local Physical Recovery Fund, budget classification 445, $425,000, $42,000 for fire apparatus, security cameras, sponsored by Bates and Gibson, set for public hearing tonight.
You have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Second. Second by Mr. Hopper. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. If you're here tonight, wish to speak for or against, ordinance 2309, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Greg Wright, City Metrroller. I do want to address the concerns raised about the security camera items. The parking garage being built there at the Madison, per the agreement with the builder, will become city property. We will own it, we will operate it. That's the reason we want to put security cameras into it. The residents of the apartments there that utilize it will be paying a monthly fee to the owner of the apartments that will then be remitted to the city to rent those spaces on a monthly basis from us. After that, there will be 82 public parking spaces, as well as during the day, during weekdays, where if those people are out of work, we'll have the ability to backfill those spaces. I think City Legal is also working on documents to create a parking commission, because in order to operate a parking garage, we will have to have a parking commission, so that will be something you all will be seeing later in the years as we move forward through this process, but it is our garage, we will be responsible for securing it, and so that is why those cameras are required in that proposal.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2309?
Not so much for events, but sort of tangentially related. Have we taken a look at every security camera in the city and how much it costs to upgrade those? I'm thinking of the bus stop incident where it's right in front of the firehouse and we can't figure out.
Our plan is if these work out well, we will be upgrading the entire system across the city. It's obviously not a great achievement. So it may be done over a period of time. But we do know that we've got cameras that we'll be putting at the Horstville Sports Park. Those are already built into the cost of that one. These work out well, they're just well, DPW, the fire stations, the justice center, all of that community center. We're going to try and get everything changed over to the new system. It's just going to be all the time to get there, assuming these work as well as they've been solutions.
Right. Anyone else? Close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council regarding ordinance 2309? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2309, first reading. Ordinance 2309 passes first reading nine zero. Second reading.
I would like to consider moving this for a second reading. I think that, I know that there's some paperwork that's got to be done, but the fire department has been waiting a long time for your truck to be in the manufacturing process. So I'm moved for suspension.
Right. We have a motion of Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules through second reading and ordinance 2309. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any discussion on suspension?
I would reiterate that the motion was made at the last meeting that there was no need to move this forward. Correct?
Right. And any further discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call. Suspend to the rules through second reading and ordinance 2309. The motion to suspend the rules fails to pass on a vote of three or two, two to seven. Second reading, resolution 2305.
Resolution affirming interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and plus the township Johnson County regarding fire protection sponsored by Gibson.
You have a motion, motion of Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Mr. Hopper, I think. Let that in first. Any discussion on the council, resolution 2305? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2305, second reading. Resolution 2305 passes second reading nine zero. Resolution 2306.
Resolution, affirming resolution 2304, the vicarage in certain areas within the city of Greenwood and economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for carbon tax abatement and setting the time and place for public hearing. Anderson Hauser sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
No motion. So, Mr. Hopper, second. There, by Ms. Gibson. This is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. Open up for a public hearing. If you're here, wish to speak for or against resolution 2306, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, and roll call, resolution 2306. Resolution 2306 passes on a vote of nine to zero. There are none under new business, miscellaneous businesses, the second opportunity for members of the audience to address the council this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And there is a five minute time.
Good evening. My name is Tim Hudgens, 257 Kimbrough Drive. Earlier this afternoon, I sent an email out to all of you in reference to a concern that I had, just to consolidate it down briefly. Greenwood has spent a lot of effort over the last 20 years establishing a trail system. And one of the goals was that, was to attract a new generation of people to Greenwood because there seem to be a lot of people who desire to have that type of quality of life. What I have seen over the last several years, and Tracy Trail in particular, is that initial investment is beginning to deteriorate. And my request to you is to give some attention to Tracy Ditch in particular as it continues to deteriorate. There's a lot of the outflow from the storm sewers that is damaged, needs repair. The erosion along Tracy Ditch is becoming substantial. And part of that is directly a result to groundhogs. So I made a couple of suggestions, wanting to have some of those groundhogs contracted with the IDM and have those groundhogs relocated. And we need to do something with the deteriorating infrastructure with that. And part of that goes with the quality of life. If Tracy Trail simply turns into a trail next to a sewer and it no longer becomes desirable, people no longer want to use it. And we lose that benefit of having that trail system that we put so much effort into establishing within Greenwood. So that's essentially my concern that I wanted to present to you this evening. And I have several pictures. I don't know whether the link in my email works. And I don't know that I can connect my laptop for you tonight.
I did see one of the pictures. That was the only one I could pull up. All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
I see you recall that we cleaned Tracy Ditch, but it's not technically ours, right? Isn't it, is it the county's or is it ours? Does anybody know what's in there?
Many years ago, that issue was actually addressed here. And the conclusion was that it was not Johnson County's. It belonged to the city of Greenwood. If I remember correctly, I could stand correct.
I think you worked for it.
All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? All right, moving on. Any miscellaneous business from the council?
Mr. Campbell, I do have something really quick, just to kind of inform everybody else on the council. I know I've talked with Mr. Hill, Mr. Williams, and yourself about the a letter that some constituents on the south side of the apartment development of Emerson received. If you recall, when the developer came to us, when Garrett came to us, they were initially going to do a berm on the south side. And we requested a fence in the commitments so that the constituents could keep their sheds where they were. Those constituents have since received a letter from Garrett asking them to sign and notarize the agreement. And they turned to Garrett to keep their sheds. And that, part of that agreement is that the developer can come back at any time and for whatever reason, tell them they must remove those sheds. So I just wanted to bring that up to everybody because I felt that kind of went against the discussion that we had and the whole purpose behind the fence. I don't know that we have any course of action that we can take on that, but nevertheless, I thought we were supportive of that.
Thank you. Any questions about that? All right. Anything else from the council? All right, other miscellaneous business corporation council?
Nothing. Corporation council.
Controller? Mayor? We are adjourned.